Hi, everyone. Good evening. Everyone settle down and we'll get started as it's seven o'clock. Thank you all very much for joining us tonight. This is a meeting of Froom Town Council. I'm Fiona Barres and I will be chairing this evening's meeting. Just to remind everyone, we've got people online and here in the room. For those in the room, the emergency exit is to the rear corner of the room and the assembly point is on the far side of the car park. Toilets are at the end of the corridor on the right-hand side and there is an accessible toilet through that door to the right of the lift. Help ourselves to cups of tea, et cetera, over there. Tonight, Peter Will Clark, Laura, Sarah, Becca and Rachel will manage the minutes, questions board, participant settings and the IT generally. The meeting will be recorded and made available on our YouTube channel. For those councillors attending via Zoom, please use the yellow hand and for everyone else, please ask questions through the Q and A board. Before we get started on tonight's agenda, we have got a couple of sad goodbyes and one very happy hello to say. As most of you now know, Paul Wynn, who has been our town clerk for the last 14 years, retired on Friday. In one of our first meetings that we had after I became leader, Paul told me that he wasn't motivated by the title of town clerk or running a council, but by the chance to make a real difference to Froom, to this community and to the town where he's raised his family. And I think that sort of sums up perfectly his time here. He's always, he always looked beyond the job description, both his own as clerk and that more broadly of us as a council, thinking about how to create opportunities, strengthen the community, our community, and make things happen that really matter. Under his leadership, we achieved so much. And we, and so on behalf of sort of all councillors, past and present, staff and the town, I just wanted to say thank you to him again and wish him a very happy and peaceful retirement. Peter, who until Friday afternoon was our deputy town clerk, has very kindly agreed to step up as acting town clerk while we hold a full and open recruitment process. And I think again, I speak on behalf of all councillors when we say we have every confidence in Peter. I know that he will guide this organisation with very steady hands and just thank you for stepping up with so much willingness and enthusiasm. It's really appreciated. The second sad goodbye is actually one from a few months ago, but it was never sort of mentioned at meetings. I just wanted to speak now is that of councillor Mel Usher, who resigned over the summer. As many of you know, Mel was founder of Independence of Froom, one of the founders, and was a councillor from 2011 to 2019 and then again from 2022. He, I think, has played a, played a really key part in establishing Froom Town Council as the innovative and community-driven organisation that it is. One of the things that I sort of quickly realised when I became a councillor was how often Mel's name comes up when you're talking about how an initiative or project started. He was at the beginning of so many things here in Froom, from Fair Froom to Adventure to Green and Healthy Froom, which I'm obviously a part of now. He has sort of catalysed so much good stuff here in Froom. And I think our time with him as councillors, I think we all really appreciated his boldness and his occasional reminders that we've just got to make a decision with the information that we have and get on with it and take a bit of a risk. And I think that has been really appreciated. So again, I just wanted to thank Mel, who can't be here tonight because he seems to be away quite a lot. He's making the most of his, every time I talk to him, he's sort of, I'm in the Lake District. I'm anywhere else, but I hope you're having a lovely time wherever you are, Mel. And thank him again on behalf of all of us, the staff and the town, for all the work that he's put into making Froom a better place over the last however many years. Which leads us on to the happy hello. This is councillor Lindsay Mayhew's first meeting. Lindsay was elected in a by-election a few weeks ago to replace Mel in Market Ward. And I just want to say welcome to Froom Town Council. This also marks the first time that ever that Froom Town Council has had a majority female councillors. I tried to find out how many town councils there are that have crossed this milestone. It's very, very few. I couldn't get exact numbers. Ninety per cent of local authorities, and it's going to be even less at town and parish, are male-dominated. And so I just think it's something that deserves to be recognised, that it's only one, it's eight and nine, but it's just flipped the other way finally. That's, yeah, that's the, right. So moving on to tonight's agenda, the first item is apologies for absence. Who have we had?
From Sarah Butler, sorry, Sarah Butler, Lisa Meriwether and Philip Campania.
Brilliant. Can I get a proposer to accept those apologies? Anne Hills, a secondair, Ben Still, all those in favour? That is... Unanimous? Unanimous? Brilliant. Do we have any declarations of councillors' interests? I will declare an interest on item seven as it relates to my allowance and I will leave the room. I've asked deputy chair Anita Collier and she has kindly agreed to take over chairing for that item. Are there any other councillor interests? Great. So then it is on to minutes of previous meetings. There were two, the 27th of August, and then an extraordinary council meeting, which was mainly a private session on the 8th of October. So does anyone have any queries? Andy?
Yeah, just, I took the opportunity to go back on YouTube just to check my memory. And on the, I think it was the 27th of August one, when we were discussing the skate park, we had a contribution from a young man called Luca, which seems to have escaped capture in the minutes. He was very vocal in his support and thanking us for the work we were intending to do. And I'd like just to add that to the minutes. I've given Laura the text of what's there.
Is that okay? It can just be added? Great. Can I get, are there any other questions or queries about the minutes? Great. Can I get a proposer to accept the minutes? Anita, secondair, Andy Jones, all those in favour? Yep, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is questions and comments from the public and councillors. And we're noting that we've had two reports from Somerset councillors, Adam Boydon and Dawn Denton. I just want to say thank you very much. They're really helpful and really interesting reading and it's really good to kind of hear what's going on so we can keep everything connected up. So thank you. But does anyone have anything they would like to say? Mark? Yep, you go first.
And welcome to Lisa. It's nice to have a co- so Lisa, what's your name?
Lindsay.
I work so closely with her.
Ward, Mark.
Lindsay, thank you. I'd be glad to have you on the ward with me. That'd be lovely. Thank you very much. Whoever you are. Thank you for Adam and Dawn for their contributions. Adam, I know you'd have noticed, I know you noted in your minute about the introduction of Sunday parking, which we've had some, some years now in Froom. In fact, I spoke up at Mendip Council and objected to it with a 6,000 name petition, which was ignored. You didn't, I know that within the same proposal that's introducing that across the county, there's this proposal that we might lose 120 free parking spaces in Froom that Somerset want to impose a parking charge for. A, can I ask for an update on that? And B, can I ask that all Froom-based Somerset councillors object to this on our behalf? We fought against parking charges within the town, especially in Waymouth Road, which was overturned. It would be ironic if that was overturned, then reimposed in a different way.
Yeah, hi, thanks. Thanks, Mark. The current proposal is to equalise, make all the Sunday parking consistent, charge for consistently across Somerset. There's lots of smaller towns and villages where there's free parking at the moment, which is effectively subsidised by the rest. We've had parking charges on Sunday here for several years and yes, and there was a petition. The proposal is to change the flat rate to an hourly charge. So if you would park for an hour, you'd only pay for an hour, rather than at the moment, you're effectively paying for three. So you'd save money on a short trip if you spend more time than you'd, than you wouldn't. But that's the proposal, so I hope people have responded to that. And the other thing is the potential imposition of charges for the waiting bays after a free 20 minutes. That's the intention, as in an executive or a scrutiny meeting earlier in the year, but that hasn't come forward yet. It might come forward before Christmas as a consultation. So there wouldn't be anything on that until there's a consultation on it. And of course, we'll respond once we, the details of where the parking bays would be charged for would be in that consultation. So we'll have to wait and see what that's, what that, if anything happens there, then yes, we'll respond to that, but it's not the right time to do that at the moment.
Mark, can I bring you back to that?
Like a done deal in the paper I saw that they would, and I don't, we've had no, I mean, as you know, since I became a councillor, I got very involved immediately with parking issues in the town. We were promised then, that was 2018, that we'd have a town-wide parking survey about where things were. That never happened for lots of different reasons and lots of different excuses. So I don't know, somebody's obviously done a survey because they've identified over 120 places in the town which are currently free to park, on which there'll be some form of parking charge. It'd be interesting to know where that's come from. And I trust that in the interests of residents and visitors that local councillors would speak up against that because we don't need any more charges to try and get the council out of the black hole they're in.
Hold on, there's also a couple over here. Can I just go to, sorry, I can't, yes, yes. If you've got a microphone, if someone wouldn't mind passing you a microphone. Thank you.
Hello.
Yeah.
So my name's Laura Green and I've just got a few questions. I work for the Froom Times. This is in relation to item seven on the agenda about the allowance increase.
Can I ask if it's related to an item on the agenda that it's asked when that item is up? If that's okay?
Yeah, yeah, that's okay.
Yep? So it's anything not related to items on the agenda, if that's okay? No, thank you. Lenka?
Hi there. Yeah, I've got two things. Firstly, I would like to just raise the issue of the housing. So housing crisis, which was announced by this council, I can't remember when it was. But I don't know if people are watching the news, but this has hit the national news lately. And we are seeing increased problems with housing. We have lots of people staying in temporary accommodation with no cooking facilities, babies and children. It's becoming, you know, a real, real issue with the massive. And I know obviously that Froom Town Council can't do a lot about it. But I would ask you again if you can, you know, write a letter to Somerset Council, the Somerset councillors that are here, you know, what are the plans, you know? Because it really is a crisis now. And also people living in really, really bad conditions, mouldy properties. It's affecting people's health. It's just, it is really serious. Can we, we talked about previously about putting a possible pressure on, putting a cap on Airbnb's, people from outside the town buying multiple properties. You know, can we, yeah, could we write a letter to Somerset Council? And can the Somerset councillors do anything about it?
Can I ask, is this regarding specifically regarding sort of temporary accommodation for people? Or is it the broader housing crisis? Is there anything in particular that you're concerned about? I know that the whole housing crisis is an issue. I'm not trying to diminish that. But I guess I'm just sort of, it's much more effective if there's sort of one thing we can kind of, we're writing a letter to write about, want something a bit more specific, I guess. Is there something that you're particularly concerned about?
Well, there's all those issues, I guess. I mean, there are other towns, other places that have put caps on Airbnb's, for example. I mean, to increase the housing stock. I don't know, maybe Steve Tanner is kind of, he's, he's offered support previously. Chet, are you like, no, no, I'm not asking you to sort it out. I'm just saying that that is, okay, so it's Airbnb's. The, I know Dawn's, I've spoken to Dawn before about it. The housing department at Somerset Council is in such a mess because they got rid of loads of people and then they didn't have any staff and then they recruited agency staff. You've got housing officers based in Scotland who are supporting people in Froom who don't have a clue. I don't know, it's just, I'm just raising it here to the public, to everybody.
I just had a good idea, I think, that given that you have direct experience of this in your role as Fair Froom, Peter's offered to sort of take it away and work with you on a letter to relevant people and we can kind of find out who they are, to sort of draft something that sort of draws on your specific experiences and comes from us as a council as well, if that's okay? If you're happy to work with us on.
Yeah, that'd be really helpful.
Can't sort of, I'll go to, no?
Sorry, I was, I was just going to say about putting caps and limits on Airbnb's and second homes and things. That's something that other councils have done through their neighbourhood plan. So we're, we're not looking at revising our neighbourhood plan at the moment, but obviously it's something that we will look at when we get to that point. But that, that's how it has to be done through that, that process.
Adam, is it?
Thanks, Jane. That's really helpful.
Yes.
Thanks. I mean, Somerset Council is doing something. There's a 3.3 billion underspend in the housing revenue account, which is being used to buy around 15 properties, actually buy them around Somerset, where need is greatest. It may not be Froom, but that's one thing they're doing. Another thing is the 18, I think, social, mainly social and affordable houses, which are hopefully getting permission at North Parade Car Park at the back. There's been some objections to that, but that's a scheme initiated by Mendip, previous Mendip District Council, which has been taken forward. And I think it's, it's through Housing Association. They'll come forward soon, once the section 106 is agreed. So that's something directly in Froom that will increase the social housing stock, definitely. And there's also been a letter written to the government urging, by the full council meeting in September urging the government to grant the council stronger powers and longer-term funding to build more affordable homes. So it's, it's a national problem. But we are looking at all various ways of doing that, increasing the stock, increasing stock elsewhere. But yeah, there's so much.
With regards to the reorg, I mean, we haven't, now haven't got our housing officer for our housing drop-in anymore because he was moved to a different position. And this is really impacting people. People have got nowhere to go. They can't get hold of anyone at the housing department.
That's quite a specific thing that we can probably pick up.
Yeah, well, if Adam can pick up on that, yeah, Somerset councillors, yeah. Because, you know, this is someone that's been supporting us for 15 years, the housing officer. He knows Froom really well and it's just.
Happy to also bring that up with councillor Bill Revins as well, leader of Somerset, if there's a real gap that is affecting us here in Froom.
It's impacting families, you know, and it's, therefore it's impacting Fair Froom because we're, you know, we're doing washing, we're doing drying, we're having showers. We're having to provide no cooking, you know, it's very hard to cook when you've only got a kettle. Really hard. Only you might not have a car. You know, it's really bad.
Thank you for raising it.
And sorry, the second point is, which I've kindly nicked off, is going to be involved in a meeting, just to raise the point about increased racism and hate crime. So everyone thinks that Froom is, well, not everyone, that Froom's a nice place, but unfortunately there has been a rise in this in Froom. So I think that we need to work on something, you know, the mainstream media is, is just infiltrating people and it's, people aren't feeling safe and have been in Froom. So just to raise that with everyone, if we can all just kind of look out for each other, if we see anything, let's just, you know, we really need to be mindful and looking out and picking up things and please report it. Everything needs to be reported. It can be done anonymously to the, to the police. And there is a PC SO that's dedicated, Will, who's dedicated to hate crime. So yeah, if we can all do that, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lenka, and it's great that you're having a meeting with Nick and so I'm sure we'll, yeah, pick up on that afterwards. Andy and then Nick, and then I think there was also someone over there, but we'll go Andy.
Okay, thanks. Just a couple of things in Adam's report that I wanted to see if there was any follow-on. Firstly, on the Fusion Leisure Centre situation. And secondly, I think you were hoping to get an update on where we were with planning being in special measures and how that was going to be unpicked.
First is Fusion and then it's planning. Yeah.
There's nothing to update since that, since I wrote that report. As I know, I had a meeting, we had a meeting with them and Fusion are planning to invest and instigate all the repairs they need and make a proper job of it, but they're delayed. But they're hoping to do that, do something before, before the January rush for all these New Year's resolutions that everybody has. That's their peak time. They've got to, they've got to catch that. So.
Can I just add on Fusion? I think it has been a real joint effort from a number of different councillors and our MP Anna Sabine and also on our side as well. It does feel like it's been a real team effort to try and tackle that. And I think progress, from what I hear, progress is being made. And I think that's because of a number of people working together. So thank you to everyone who's been involved in that.
Thank you. And they have meet the manager sessions. I'm not sure when the next one is, but I understand you guys are going, Froom Town councillors, to have more, more to do with Fusion. That would help. Just probably 11 o'clock one.
Someone will.
Sometime. And have a, you know, tour as well. What was the other one? Planning. Yeah, I don't, I didn't go to that meeting in the end. I don't know if Dawn has an update from that.
So it looks like they've managed to get 200 extra applications managed over the 12 weeks. So they're now, I think, about 1,200 in backlog. And I think some of the, some of the one email contact will remain, but they're going to try really hard to encourage the public to use the portal rather than email directly to the officers. Because when an officer receives an email and they have a response and it's three, you know, it's a long response. It takes an hour out of their day to actually get on with the planning applications. There was some frustration in the sense that they were going through the low-hanging fruit, like the easy applications, and there were some applications that are many years old that they haven't tackled yet. So there is plan to put in a, to bring in a consultant, which will cost more money, to help sort out the planning situation at the council because that also has an impact on the enforcement, which we know is not where it should be. So that's the plan at the moment is just to get someone in to help sort it all out. But I don't think that personally, I don't think the 12 weeks has achieved what they wanted it to achieve.
Nick?
I'll be brief. First one is parking again. I know to pick up on it from Mark, talked about earlier on. In March, I was contacted by local businesses in Badcocks who say that the parking signs in Badcocks have been obliterated by paint and graffiti. Despite the intervention of myself, Katie Fraser and also Mike Dunk and Martin Dimmery, we still haven't had any response from Somerset Council. And it goes to a kind of really fundamental thing for me around this, this council that has obviously immense challenges. But they are, there are several independent businesses at the top of that street who are directly affected by this situation where people now leave their cars parked there all day. So it means that people can't drop in and go to Lotties or to Kayfords or whichever one of those independent businesses they want to call them, there's nowhere for them to park. And to compound it, Somerset Council don't seem to have it. There's no concept of customer service. They have the monopoly on their services. If I write in and ask them to deal with something, I don't get an acknowledgement email to say they've received it. I don't get any commitment for when they're going to do something about it. Get nothing. And, and that's me with a supposed responsibility in the community representing part of the, part of the town. It's extraordinary, absolutely extraordinary that a business where the chief executive is paid a quarter of a million pounds can't actually deliver a service that acknowledges the people who write in and ask for support for what they're paid to do. To me, it's extraordinary. And can we please write again to ask that they consider adopting a customer service policy? You tell people who contact them what actions you've taken and you keep them informed of progress. It's pretty simple and it's really nonsensical that doesn't happen.
Okay, Adam, do you want to, is there anything you want to say? Dawn, I just want to give you a bit of a right of reply and then.
Thanks. I think that the moral of the story is tell us as well, even if it's not our wards, Dawn and I, we're relatively effective at getting responses. And I know, I know the buttons to push, I know it's not the right area. They shouldn't, they should respond to you out of courtesy, but it shouldn't be like that. They're, they're under immense pressure. But yeah, please forward it to me and Dawn maybe.
Thank you, Adam. And Peter's also agreed to write to Duncan Jarkey, CEO of Somerset Council, about the sort of the broader issue. And I think, and if we can also try and pick up the specific Badcocks signage issue again as well and we'll see what we can do on that. Did I see a hand up over in that direction before or not? Okay, Anita, question from Anita.
Thank you. It recently came to my attention that there was a police awards ceremony held even in Somerset, I believe Devon and Dorset were also present, at which Ashley Ray, who's done a mammoth amount of work for Froom, won volunteer of the year award, which was so well deserved. Ashley has worked so hard for us in Froom particularly, not only helping us manage the, the speed indicator devices, but he works very closely with the police and with the speed enforcement unit, I think they're now called the road safety unit, to send motorcyclists to place black boxes in certain areas where residents have an issue with speeding. And that will collect data over two weeks and give us a very clear picture about what the need is in that area. And Ashley's responsible for coordinating all of this. He is the Mendip coordinator. But specifically, I wanted to see if we could send him a message from Froom to thank him for all the work he does in this town because it is quite amazing what he achieves.
I'm very happy for that to come from me, unless you'd like it to come from you, Anita. But perhaps you can help me with that.
You all written, written to him already to congratulate him, but I think it would be rather honestly, it was done on a formal basis.
You can do that. Thank you very much and congratulations to him. Are there any other questions or comments from councillors or members of the public? Right, so I feel like I'm, oh, Adam again, just at the edge of my vision.
But questions unrelated to other things. Is there going to be an update on the toilet block at some point? And the share shop perhaps, and the other side staircase? Just wondering when that, when these are coming up again.
Toilet block, so we had initial meeting on Tuesday last week with stakeholders around the, creating sort of the Riverside vision. So which is sort of looking at that whole area. Dawn Denton came along, which was great. And the idea is to sort of build a sort of a cohesive sort of strategy for that whole area. And the toilet block is obviously a part of that. There were some really interesting conversations about that. We're looking at, because we've got a new digital participative platform that will hopefully be launching very early in the new year. And so sort of doing consultation and engagement around what the town would like for the toilet block, using that as part of that wider project starting in sort of January or so. So that is, that has sort of progressed in terms of that. The share shop, Anne, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, I'm chair of the trustees of the share shop, share Froom. The search for a perfect location for us to operate from still continues. But the prospective purchaser of the shop where we are currently storing our items is incredibly understanding. He is going to be applying for planning permission once the purchase goes through, but there's a backlog. So he's quite prepared for us to continue to store our items there in the meantime and has given us, you know, several months after he's purchased the shop to allow us to continue to store it. What we don't particularly want to do is move twice because that will cost us a lot of money. We've got lots of irons in the fire. One of the possible ways of us coming out of a hibernation is to have, if you like, a distributed service around the town. So different categories of items in different locations so that we start back in a small way, in a controlled way. Ben, is there anything I've forgotten as a fellow trustee? Andy, is there anything I've forgotten as a fellow trustee?
Most interesting opportunities is the discussion we're having with the Good Heart, but I don't know if that's in the public forum yet.
We're, we're working on a pilot. We're working on a pilot.
I know, that's fine.
And then the other one was the ramp at Welsh Mill. So the decision was made for it to be just a staircase at, I think it was sort of last year or sort of a while ago because of the cost, which was, I think, about £120,000, £130,000 to put in a ramp. And given that there are quite a lot of demands on our precept at the moment and that we're still not sure what will happen in the future with Somerset Council and a sort of a desire to sort of be careful with sort of making big capital expenses. The decision was made to just do the staircase for now, but there is space for the ramp and it could at some point come back. But I think that might be at some point in the future for a decision. I don't think there's any immediate thing on that. If we were to get a large capital, I think it would probably be one of the ones that we might look at doing. I think that's fair to say. Is that fair, Rob?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything to add to that. The steps were put in a couple of months ago. We worked with a access for all charity to see what else we could do to improve access specifically along the other side of the river there. And we've already done some access improvements to that. So we've done what we can. It was a very sad decision to take, but it was £140,000 versus £25,000. It was just a really, really hard decision to take. And we, as Fiona says, we have left the space. So we could put a ramp in in the future if funds or fundraising allowed.
Okay, great. Unless there's anything else, we'll move on to next item on the agenda, which is to agree the council plan for 2025 to 2027, and which is me presenting, so I'm going to hop over there. Have we got the presentation up? Okay. So this is, agreeing our council plan is essentially sort of the most important decision we make as councillors, because this document essentially sort of steers our work and will steer our work for the next two years. So, but before we sort of get into what, oh, thank you. Before we get into sort of talk about what we're going to be doing, I just wanted to sort of start with, oh, yeah, there we go, reflecting on the last three and a half years. We're obviously on a, councillors will say on a five-year term, and we are three and a half years into that. I've been thinking a bit recently about sort of that period when we were elected, which was back in May 2022. And it was sort of the tail end of the Covid pandemic. I remember quite a few of us got Covid throughout the campaign and that still, that fear over keeping windows open. It's also when the sort of the cost of living crisis, or as I think it really should be called, the deepening inequality crisis, was sort of really taking hold. And there were a number of people who, yeah, were really struggling with sort of making basic necessities. Our first council meeting was the big decision over Badgers Hill and being told that it would be locked the next day and we possessed if we didn't agree to save it. And we were also elected at the same time as the new unitary authority as well. And I think there was a lot of uncertainty about what that would mean for us and how that would impact Frome. And so I think over the last sort of three and a half years, a lot of our focus and our headspace has been taken up with responding to these urgent challenges. And I think that so far, a lot of our time has been defined by sort of some key questions that have been hanging over our heads quite a bit, I think. Sort of what would a devolution deal with Somerset Council look like? What would the impact of Somerset moving to a unitary on Frome be? And what is our role going forward and in this new context? And personally, I've sort of found quite a lot of clarity recently from sort of really recognizing and articulating that we are in transition as an organisation. I remember sort of saying it when I made my leader speech here in May when I was elected leader, sort of saying, and feeling quite grand about saying it, so we're a new phase of a town council and not necessarily sort of quite believing it, I think. But I think we really are sort of in transition now as an organisation. And I do think that we are sort of beginning to come out of this sort of this sort of period of asking questions and beginning to get some sort of clarity and about our world going forward and how we move forward. There we go. So I think, sort of then thinking about where we are now. As I said, I think sort of being in transition, we're sort of in a period of transition as an organisation. The role that we played in Frome when we had Mendip District and Somerset County, I think it's changed a lot with the Somerset Unitary. And I think that the role that we played then perhaps doesn't quite make sense. I think life is increasingly difficult for many people in Frome. I had a message from a friend today who just said, I just feel like life is just a bit too hard right now. And that's actually how I feel a lot of the time. And the county level and national funding cuts are having a genuine impact on people's lives here in Frome. And I think that we all recognise that. As a result of all of this, we have stepped up as a council. And as a result, we have grown significantly over the last few years. And that is a theme that will be picked up in the peer review and improvement plan, which is the next item on the agenda. I think we all recognise that we can't sort of try to directly fill the gaps that are being left by these cuts. In many cases, they are black holes that can never be filled. And I think we also recognise and have said many times that we don't just want to replicate the old models. Fundamentally, they don't work. I think we all sort of recognise that that the funding model for local government isn't working. And we don't just want to sort of, you know, take stuff on from Somerset Council and try and do it ourselves in the same way. But instead, we want to sort of reimagine things. I think we also recognise that, you know, it's not just about responding to the immediate needs of the town, but also there is now a bit of a requirement for us to take a more strategic and long-term approach and definitely to not lose sight of all of that long-term work that we have been doing over the last 14 years or so. The phase that comes up a lot is that we don't want to lose our spark in all of this. That's the sort of the phase. And we don't want to lose what makes Fromington Council unique. We have a reputation for doing things differently, for finding creative solutions and for working collaboratively with our community. And I think that the spark, the sort of the sense of possibility and innovation and thinking differently is something that we really need to hold on to as the challenges facing our community continue to increase and the future looks ever more uncertain. I think there is a really exciting opportunity for us now, which is to sort of bring together the increased responsibility that we now have with the new assets and devolution deal from Somerset Council with all of the expertise and experience we've gathered over the last 14 years around sort of galvanising our community and working in partnership and increasing sort of community capacity and energy and bringing those two things together to really sort of reimagine local assets, services and decision-making. And I think that's really exciting. So the council plan, which is what we're voting on, is one of four key strategic documents that all sort of fit together. Essentially, the council plan is what do we as a group of councillors want to achieve? In this case, in the next two years. Then we have the work programme, which is how are we going to achieve it? The budget, which is how will we resource this? And then we're now looking at creating a sort of, the language may change, but an impact and performance management framework, which will then be, are we achieving this? And so it's, but all of it sort of flows from this council plan that we are hopefully approving tonight. And this will guide our work over the next two years until the end of this administration. And once it's hopefully agreed, it will give a really clear brief to staff on sort of creating the work programme and the budget. In previous years, we've sort of agreed the council plan at the same time as the work programme and budget. And I think last year, because of a number of different reasons, we sort of, they were creating them concurrently and it sort of led to a few issues. And my hope is that by agreeing this now and there being a really clear brief, that that will sort of ease the process for the work programme and budget creation, because there will be a really clear brief from it. So it is basically, it will look very familiar to you, except the cover has changed from orange to purple. And there's a few bits added in. But I think we sort of wanted to update it, because as I sort of said, we're in a period of transition and things are changing quite a lot and clarity is sort of coming through. And I think a lot of clarity has come through in the last year or so in terms of our devolution deal. So it made sense to sort of revisit it before setting the work programme and budget. It was mentioned in our peer challenge report, where they said very nice things about it, but did also say that it would be strengthened by SMART objectives. And I think that is something a number of us have sort of said previously and sort of clearer focuses. And so for the first time, we're sort of adding in mainly SMART. They're not perfect SMART objectives, and I'm not going to pretend that they are, but they are a step towards that. And they are sort of, for the first time really, are sort of setting goals and targets for ourselves as an organisation, which I think is a really good step forward. It's been a really collaborative process. I might be sort of talking about it now, tonight, and I did the sort of bit of like pulling it all together. But almost all councillors and I think all managers attended at least one of the workshops and have input into it. So it has been a real team effort. There were sort of three main workshops that were sort of held. And we also did SWOT analyses for the aims to sort of look at what the strengths and weaknesses and threats and opportunities were in Frome before sort of moving on. If you only want to read the new bits, it's basically an introduction from me at the beginning. There's a what's next section. And then in each of the five aims, there's sort of the focuses and objectives anew, which I will, but I will sort of go through that in a bit, in a sec. So I think I sort of wanted to give a bit of a summary of where I think we're going with this and sort of pull out some themes. I think there was a real focus on tangible projects that make a genuine impact in Frome. And finishing up what we started, there were quite a few things that we sort of started five years ago and some projects that we'd like to kind of get across the line before we potentially leave in 18 months' time, or some of us stick around or not. There is a sort of a focus on strengthening our advocacy for Frome and making sure that Frome's voice is heard at county, regional and national level. Part of that, I think, is a result of the shift to unitary and the fact that the unitary is sort of based in Taunton now, which is an hour and a half away. And recognising that a little bit of a gap has maybe been created that we can step into. Also sort of stepping up strategically, which is on a similar vein, and working in partnership more with Somerset Council. That sort of comes through. Consolidating, there's lots of big words, consolidating, maximising and animating our new assets and responsibilities. But basically, we've taken the stuff on now, let's make the most of it. This is an easy way of putting that. Firming up our foundations. Again, this is going to come through when Peter presents on the peer challenge. But there's sort of a bit of work, given how much we have grown in the last decade or so, to sort of firm ups on the foundations and the structures and the processes, et cetera. And there is a sort of a new commitment to continued improvement and increasing our impact and, or renewed focus on increasing our impact and challenging ourselves to be as efficient and effective as possible. So I'm just going to go through each of the five aims. I'm not going to read out all of the objectives in there. They'll be very familiar to councillors as they sort of come through the process. But just sort of talk a little bit about the focus and maybe pull out a couple of the objectives as I go through. So in grow community wellbeing, sort of the focus is on early help or prevention and young people. As the sort of the bar to access statutory support gets ever higher, more and more people are sort of being pulled into crisis. And we think a sort of a response to that is us sort of doing what we can to sort of build and strengthen that network of community organisations that can help prevent people from sort of going into crisis and catch them before they get there. Obviously, this is important for empathy reasons and just, you know, all of that. And also, crisis services are very expensive as well. And that is of help to Somerset Council. And there's also a real focus on young people and the needs of young people. It is something that has come up a lot and it came up in the picture of Frome work as well, that Hannah Stockford led on last year. The lack of, or sort of not quite enough places for young people to hang out. And we're doing some also, some great work around Young People's Grants Project at the moment, which I'm really excited about, participatory grants process. So giving them a pot of money to decide how to spend, which is really exciting. So the key centre is sort of key to that first bit, that early help and prevention, I think. And we've sort of got the, creating a thriving community space there as a sort of a key objective. Also having a look at the FTC Grants Programme to make sure that we're sort of getting the most impact out of that. And also a sort of a commitment and objective to sort of shape a strategic approach to supporting local projects that fill identified gaps in provision and attract grant funding. And I was in a meeting with a few other councillors and officers last week about that, which is really good. The next aim is support a thriving town. As most of you will know, we sort of made a real commitment three and a half years ago to sort of supporting the town centre and making a real difference in the town centre, recognising that it was looking increasingly poorly maintained. And Dirty Nick Dove has really led on this along with the town centre group to make a real difference. And that sort of commitment remains alongside us sort of recognising that there is a gap that we think we can sort of have an impact in around sort of broader economic development of the town. There is, or will be, a new regional authority coming at some point, Heart of Wessex, which will have a focus on growth and potentially pots of funding for growth projects. And we'd like to kind of do what we can to sort of define, you know, what would we, and, you know, we would obviously do it in collaboration with people of the town. What do we sort of see our economic future as being? And what do we sort of want to be known for? And what do we want to attract to this town? And then there could be some projects that emerge out of that that would put us well placed to sort of attract some of that funding, hopefully, to Frome whenever that authority does come. Also, sort of for the first time, sort of looking at exploring post-16 education opportunities. It is a new area, so it's sort of explore is sort of the level that it's at at the moment. But this is again, a gap that we have identified, particularly around sort of skill development. And we think that there's role that we can play here in terms of convening. I sort of mentioned it to, in a few meetings recently that I've had with Peter, and it definitely feels like something that numerous organisations in the town. I spoke to Bill Revins about it, councillor Bill Revins, and he was quite excited about it as well. So we think there's something that we can do there. And you will see the public toilet provision is on there, Adam, as a key objective. So that is on there. So the next one is cultivate environmental sustainability. And the focus here on the climate side is really sort of doubling down on the work that we've been doing over the last few years, that obviously I've been quite involved in. It's come through sort of Green and Healthy Frome and being able to sort of really experiment with some of that funding to really understand how we can have a biggest impact on retrofit and energy efficiency in Frome. And we've been sort of trying things out and making real progress. So there's a real focus on retrofit renewable energy and the reuse centre, if we could find a site for that. That is, there's so much energy around it in Frome. And that's a potential sort of devolution conversation. And also, again, as sort of for the first time, emphasis on the River Frome, which is something that we, you know, know lots of people in Frome care a great deal about. And again, I think it came up in the picture of Frome work quite strongly. And there's been numerous sort of organisations like Frome Families for the Future and Friends of the River Frome sort of talking about it. And it is such a key part of our town, flows right through the centre. We wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the River Frome. Aim four, oh, there we go, is improve assets and infrastructure. So the main focus here is on, as I said, sort of stabilising and maximising our new assets, making the most of them, having taken them on. And then on ensuring that Frome's voice is heard. This is really building on the work that Steve Tanner and Jane have been doing over the last, oh, how long have, Steve, how long have you been around for? A long time as Chair of Planning Committee. A long time in terms of sort of advocating for Frome within the planning process. There is one thing on here that I am particularly excited about. I think all councillors know what it is, but organise a citizens' assembly to provide input into Somerset's local plan. I think that this is a way of really making sure that we are having a say over how our town develops and giving people a real voice and providing us as well with a real mandate that could, you know, they're very hard to argue with. And also ensuring that a wide, a truly representative sample of people are in the room when that, when those conversations are had, because it can include people who, it will include people who are on the social housing waitlist or in privately rented accommodation. And then finally, there we go. The final one is to be a bold and effective council, which is so sort of deals with all the internal stuff. And the emphasis there is on, as Peter will explain in a bit. We had the peer review process and we are tonight sort of suggesting that we set up, we sort of build an improvement plan, a specific work programme in January, and set up an improvement advisory group. So there's a real sort of commitment to improving our efficiency and effectiveness, sort of responding to that, doing that foundation building. And also in enabling more participation. So we have the digital engagement platform on there as well. And the last one is sort of continuing to sort of, you know, be a bit different as well and push boundaries and be bold, which is so important. So those are the five aims. Give a bit of an overview. Please do read the rest of the plan. Hopefully it all sort of fits together. And the next thing is what's next. So if it's hopefully agreed tonight, that forms the basis of our work programme and budget creation process. The work programme budget will be agreed in January. If, you know, this is sort of being done, this is our sort of intention as a group of councillors. It is for two years. It's not just for one year. You know, we think that it is doable, but if there is anything in particular that as we get into the budget setting process, starts to feel that, oh, I don't know if we can do this, we can, it can come back with a line through it and a bit of an edit. And essentially, this is our brief as a group of councillors. This is what we want to achieve in the next two years. And one of the reasons for sort of having, you know, sort of talking about it now with a bit of gap between with a bit of gap between now and the budget and work programme is also, so it becomes a bit more of a conversation. And so if anyone does have any thoughts on it or would like to send anything, then that's my email address up there. They're very much welcome to do so. So any questions from anyone or any comments or anything on any of that? Andy?
Just a very, excuse me, quick one, going right back to where you started. I think we've talked about this being a two-year programme. In my mind, that means that actually it potentially reaches beyond the barrier of the end of this administration and gives the new administration at least something to be getting on with while they find their feet and get going. Because I think that was a, we missed a step or two three and a half years ago because we didn't have anything like this ready to work with.
I think there was a thing in place, but I think the idea is that, yes, it does. Because it's sort of, you know, this administration will set next year's budget and work programme as well, or, sorry, 26, 27's work budget and work programme. So yeah, the next two, basically. And it will inform that, obviously, you know, when the new administration comes in, they have an opportunity to change things. But it does mean that they can find their feet, as you say, while work is continuing and looking at what they want to do differently, etc. So the idea is it goes to the end of 27 and gives a bit of a thing. Dawn?
Thank you. I remember when we first got elected, we had regular meetings with councillors. And I would like to propose that we reinstate those. I don't know what the others feel, but the Somerset councillors to meet regularly with the Froom Town councillors so that we can share what's happening at Somerset. We all sit on different committees, and we can all bring something different to the table as well.
I think that's a really good idea, I remember those. I think they died quite soon after we got elected. I think because, it was also because it was Somerset County and Mendip District and Froom Town. I think when it became two, that's, I think that's a really good idea, and I can ask Peter to help set that up. We've also been having, I've been having a discussion with Bill Revins and Anna Sabine about maybe hosting a Froom summit at some point in early spring, sort of bringing executive plus our Somerset councillors, plus Anna, plus all of us together to talk about some of the key issues in Froom. And in a day, with also a nice lunch and, you know, nice connection time as well. But yeah, but we can look at, yeah, there's lunch, Dawn's in. Yes, Peter?
Dawn, do you have a view in terms of how often we should be meeting?
Okay, I think we all go to lots of meetings. So I think it would be looking at maybe strategic points in your year when you know that you're coming up to a budget, or, you know, maybe after decisions are made, like on the planning decision. So maybe strategically, I think it might be better. I don't know what Helen and Adam think, but instead of having, you know, monthly, it's really hard to get together. But if we can come up with a diary, and actually, if you can have things in advance, then we can always try and make a plan, that's the other thing.
If we sort of look at quarterly, might be a good sort of structure. But we can look at when they are to coincide with key dates. I think that's a good point. Are there any other comments or questions, Nick?
Yeah, thank you very much. Really comprehensive presentation, lots of detail in there. My only concern is some of the stuff is quite nebulous, it's quite hard to pin down. So trying to shoehorn things into a smart framework is quite hard. And I worry a bit about how some of the staff, I mean, I've worked in organisations before where activity suddenly just becomes distorted while you're trying to hit some of the specific objectives. And we've got to be careful how we do that. But I'm welcome, the idea, it's just make sure we apply them in a way so they can be delivered without distorting the behaviour of staff.
I agree, and I think this is, I think everyone knows how it works, that it gets something going and then see how it's working and iterate if needs be and continue with improvement. And I think that this is a starting point for that framework. But I agree, it's seeing how it works, and if something isn't working, then we can change it, definitely. Are there any other questions or comments? Adam?
Thanks again. I second Dawn's request for meetings, as long as there's biscuits. As long as there's biscuits. I'm happy to meet any, anytime, anywhere, as long as there's biscuits. It's always good to talk, and I've probably got a short list of several people in this room who I probably need a meeting with about the issues they've raised, including Lenko and so on. And to talk about all sorts of things. And we don't really talk enough, but it can only help things, help smooth things and help get things done if we do talk. But otherwise, I'm thinking, this is great. It's an ambitious town council, got the staff, got the capability, and well done. And some other towns in Somerset are a bit like this, but most are not. And I'm very pleased to be here.
I'm actually meeting up with, there's been an email, I like it because it's called the Big Four, is the name of the email. So it's the leaders of Yeovil Town Council, Taunton Town Council and Bridgewater Town Council. And we are actually meeting up in beginning to middle of December. Because I'm quite interested to hear what they're doing as well. And the key theme around that is devolution. So I will also report back on that as well. Anything else? In that case, can we go to the recommendation, which is to agree the updated council plan 2527 to guide our work programme and budget setting processes. I'm going to propose this, so proposed by Fiona, seconded by Carla Colanet. All those in favour? That's unanimous. Very exciting. Okay. The next item on the agenda is to approve the response to the peer challenge. That's over to you, Peter.
Lots of connections between this item and the last one, as you might expect. I'll try and explain those as best I can as we go along. But first of all, before we actually look at the detail, I just wanted to explain why we requested a peer challenge. And you've heard from Fiona, the growth that we've had, particularly in the precept, but also in the scale of our workforce over the last decade. And also more recently, we've taken on new assets and services. And I think we wanted to be confident that we're set up to deal with that growth. And our resources are used as effectively and as efficiently as possible. So really asking the Local Government Association, the LGA, for their help in challenging us and learning from their peer challenge team seemed to be really the right thing to do. And in July this year, the corporate peer challenge actually happened. So a number of staff and councillors met with the team. And we have now received the team's report. So hopefully, most of you will have had a chance to read through that. And it's time for us now to respond to that. But first of all, it's important for me to summarise the findings of the peer challenge team. Firstly, what they considered that we do well. So they valued our ambition and our values-driven approach, which is clearly understood internally, that's what they said to us. Our strong civic leadership and our ability to foster community capacity and energy. They acknowledged, as we all know, that we have a highly valued reputation, not just within Froom, but also in other parts of the country. And indeed, I recently attended the Society of Local Council Clerks' annual conference. And there were many other clerks who were beating a path to my door when they knew that I worked for Froom Town Council. They recognised that we've been very successful. And obviously, that's also been reflected in the awards that the town councillors has won. Our ethos of engagement, participation and innovation. Our responsiveness to local needs and our willingness to operate, you know, beyond conventional boundaries in the sector. We've actually pushed the envelope in many areas. And lots of other councils have taken an interest in how we've broken the mould for the sector. And lastly, but by no means least, a very committed, motivated and law workforce. All of those things were strengths that the peer challenge team recognised. But interestingly, they also identified some areas for improvement. And in particular, the need for medium-term financial planning. Also to strengthen our risk management. Really so that we can take advantage of new opportunities and mitigate emerging risks for the council as we grow, so those challenges and opportunities will grow. They identified the need to strengthen our governance and decision-making and invest in councillor development. So they recognised that at times, there have been differences in expectations around how and when work is carried out and possibly an over-reliance on informal communication channels, which have at times affected our cohesion and relationships internally. So they very much felt that we needed to strengthen our governance and decision-making and invest in councillor development. Fiona's already mentioned the fact that they've identified the need for smart objectives and embedding our project and performance management. They recognise that staff need to be well-equipped and supported to address all of the complex issues that an organisation of this scale and reach has. They suggested we have a more structured and proactive approach to our relationship with Somerset Council. And that was to ensure that our priorities are as much as possible aligned. The need to strengthen our messaging externally and ensure that we reinforce the trust that the community has in FTC. And the last point is that they wanted us to take advantage of all of the support networks that are available within the parish sector. So in particular, National Association, also the Somerset Association of Local Councils. But there are other forms of support within the sector that they fear that we should make greater use of in the future. So no doubt you will have read the report, and Fiona and I, as authors, have reflected on what this really means for the council. Firstly, we believe that the response to the peer challenge should not be a one-off. Rather, this should be the start of a commitment towards continuous improvement. And that's very appropriate for an organisation of our scale. That commitment will make us much more resilient in the face of our challenges. And another thing that we should take heed of really is to focus not just on our efficiency, but also on our impact in the community, its efficiency and effectiveness. And Fiona mentioned on the last item about our spark. So, you know, in the course of charting a way forward, we should try hard to ensure we don't lose our spark, things that make us different in this sector. So what should we do next? The proposal is that we commit to preparing a plan, an improvement plan. It's more than simply a response to the peer challenge report. It must go further than that and consider all of the things that we know we need to do as an organisation of this scale. And the proposal is also to set up an advisory group to prepare that plan, but also to monitor its implementation and progress over the coming year. So we want to move quickly on this and build some momentum. The proposal is that we start in November, so very soon, and that we bring some, or the group brings some recommendations to the January council meeting. And that's so that the improvement plan can actually inform the work programme and budget for next year. The, you'll see from the brief, and this is an important element to this, attached to the report was a suggestive brief for the advisory group. You'll see that there are five key areas of focus. The first is HR, workplace and councillor development. So that's about strengthening our capacity and capability in areas such as HR, finance, business support. It's about strengthening our internal communications, reviewing the way that we recruit and retain staff, assessing staff training needs and improving councillor development, particularly in terms of induction and ongoing training. Finance and risk management is the second area that is suggested, the second theme. That's about developing a medium-term financial plan for a minimum of three years, strengthening our risk management, and also reviewing our legal responsibilities and compliance. The third one is around operational efficiency. So reviewing our governance, creating a scheme of delegation, ensuring that our resources align with our priorities and improving our IT and AI capabilities so that we can take advantage of all of the new techniques and technologies that are available. Performance and impact, Fiona mentioned about creating an organisational impact and performance management framework. First step of that will be to assess how effectively we're meeting our goals and how effective we are in terms of performing against the council plan. But it's also about recommending how we adapt the way that we work and ensuring that we strengthen our management of projects and our infrastructure, including training. And then the last theme that we've identified is around external relationships and collaboration. So that's creating a plan for more effective engagement and collaboration with Somerset Council, but also other partners in the community. So that is a quick whistle-stop tour through improvement and proposals for an improvement plan and an improvement advisory group in response to not just the peer challenge, but also the things that we know are important for a council of this scale. So I'm going to stop there and see if anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Peter. Before we go to questions, I just also wanted to thank the team that came, Helen, Paul, Sally, Justin, Chris and David. It is kind of amazing, when you think about it, that these people gave up three or four days of their time and they worked really long hours. They were here, you know, we were meeting them at eight, eight-thirty in the morning, and then again at six-thirty at night, to basically utilise all of their expertise and experience and insight to help make us a better council. And I just really wanted to put on record that we're incredibly grateful to them. And the report is really helpful. You can see this is my copy, I went through and highlighted it. Everything positive is in pink, everything, issues are in yellow and green is in, and green is suggestions and recommendations. And it's just incredibly useful, and I keep referring to it, so I just want to say thank you. Thank you, Peter. Are there any comments or questions about that? Andy?
Just picking up. I had the incredible pleasure at the start of this week of sitting on a training call about our new AIGAR submission, which is due next May. Ninety minutes of my life that I shan't get back in a hurry. But one of the themes of that session was that, in fact, AIGAR is much more looking now about not just have we got a process to manage our risks, but are we checking that that process is delivering the result we need it to? And I think that's something that we need to build into this scope of how we review what's going on.
May I also just ask for clarity, AIGAR, can you just, I don't, what it is?
So there's basically, there used to be nine assertions, there are now 10 assertions that we have to sign off to say we're operating within the rules that we should be operating within. Sarah, would you put it any more detailed than that?
I think Fiona just wanted the acronym,
Yeah.
Accounting Governance and Accountability Report, Annual Governance and Accountability Report.
Okay, just for clarity. Any other comments or questions about that? Anything else? I will say, all the people named for the advisory group have agreed to be part of it. I did check with them before their name went up. So nothing else, we'll go to the recommendation, which is, hold on, I want to read it off here if I did it. So the recommendation is to set up an improvement advisory group to be chaired by Fiona Bowers as Chair and Leader and involving councillors Nick Dove, Carla Colanett, Anne Hills, Mark Dorrington and Acting Town Clerk, Responsible Finance Officer, Intermin Deputy Town Clerk and Executive Assistant, that will inform our response to the peer challenge and a broader improvement plan to be approved by council in January twenty twenty six, twenty six. And secondly, to approve the brief for the improvement advisory group, which is in appendix for four point three. So can I get a proposer for that recommendation? Nick Dove, seconded by Andy Jones, all those in favour? Great, that's unanimous, thank you very much. Next up is item five, which is to adopt the annual report twenty four, twenty five. And I think that's Rachel, so over to you.
Yes, and if you're all happy, I'm just going to stay here. The annual report. Hopefully you've all seen it. The intent of the annual report is to provide a record of a council's activities during twenty four, twenty five, so the last period. It really is reflective of what we've been doing, how we are funded, how we spend our income. It highlights the projects that the team would particularly like to note and is reflective of projects from last year's work programme. The report will form part of our submission to the National Association of Local Council's council award scheme in our continuing bid to keep our gold award local council status and is made up in time honoured fashion, Andy Jones's mayoral year, the income and expenditure figures and pie charts, highlights from the managers' end of year work programme updates, the leaders' year and finally the grant recipients. If we adopt it tonight, a copy will be held at reception and online it will be under publications and strategic documents.
Thank you, Rachel. And can I also give a special thanks to Miles for their amazing design work on this and also the council plan? Yeah, just, I do love the circles of photos, I think it's great. Any comments or questions about the annual report? Anyone? No, in that case, thank you very much. Let's go to the recommendation, which is nice and easy, adopt the annual report twenty four to twenty five, proposed by Tracy, seconded by Anita Collier, all those in favour? Carla's left the room. I don't know what you do in that situation. Do you want to vote for the annual report? Put your card up quickly. All those in favour? Can we do that again? Unanimous, there we go. Great, thank you. Right, item six on the agenda is back over to Peter. It is to agree support for the Cheese and Grain. And I think I saw Steve, is he having a nap at the back? Steve snuck in, I looked over, I was wondering whether you were closing your eyes for a minute or so. Thank you for coming, Steve.
So it may be that at some point Steve may wish to add to this, but there are really two parts of this report. As you know, one of the things that we like to do, one of the things that you've asked us to do is to update you on progress regarding key projects that affect our assets. And the Cheese and Grain, of course, is one of those that we have on a long lease from Somerset Council and we sublet the property to the Cheese and Grain. As many of you will be aware, and as we agreed at an earlier meeting, we have been doing what we can to assist the Cheese and Grain with their plans for an extension. I'm pleased to say that planning consent has now been granted for that. And we're in the process currently of preparing the necessary legal documentation that will enable us to take on small amounts of additional land to enable that extension to proceed, but also to enable the sublease to the Cheese and Grain to be extended from twenty forty to twenty fifty five. And that's really important in the context of raising funding for big projects. Most funders these days look for a minimum of a twenty five year lease to enable them to come forward. So I know that the Cheese and Grain are in active discussion with prospective funders and obviously we wish them well and we will continue to support them with that activity. There is also on this agenda a proposal for your decision. So another bit of good news, the Cheese and Grain has secured thirty eight thousand pounds in grant funding from the Somerset Rural England Prosperity Fund, which is administered here in Somerset by Somerset Council. And that's to support the installation of new solar panels and also solar PV panels, sorry, also an array of batteries that will enable the energy generated by those solar panels to be stored and used later. I understand that the Cheese and Grain have matched funding for that in order to meet the total cost. But one of the issues is that the grant from the Somerset REPF is to be paid in arrears. And so for cash flow reasons, the Cheese and Grain have approached us for a bridging loan of thirty eight thousand pounds. The, I mean, there's no question that the investment will cut the venue's energy bills, will reduce its carbon footprint. And there will also be benefits to us as well because the project will involve the replacement of our existing solar panels with more efficient ones at the same feed in tariff that we currently enjoy, so that there is some benefit to us too as the landlord. So really, what is required in order for this all to move forward is that not only does the Cheese and Grain require this bridging loan, but also requires our approval for the installation of the panels and the array of batteries. There are two other things as well that are needed. One is approval from Somerset Council as the ultimate freeholder. And there is also something known as prior approval from Somerset Council as local planning authority. This isn't quite planning consent that's required. And my understanding is, it should be a shorter process, but nonetheless, these things need to be put in place before the installation can go ahead. I don't know whether, at this point, whether Steve would like to add anything to that presentation?
Can you use a microphone? Mark's got one, just a...
Oh, right, okay, can you hear me? Is that switched on? Oh, good. Prior approval, that means we had planning permission for it in the past, but it's timed out. So basically, it's down to the Somerset planners to find and raise objections if they indeed have any. If they don't raise objections within fifty days, we automatically get prior approval. I understand they're probably just likely to leave it in their in tray and then have to touch it or worry about it and eventually the problem will go away. We'll see. Of course, all the panels will belong to the town council, as the building does effectively. You've got a very long lease on the building, so anything that we, you know, if we spend the two million pounds building the extension, it will be a Frum Town Council building that we're putting up. And also, it's, the solar panels are just one part of a much, much broader carbon reduction plan. And we're working on that with Frum Town Council. So that things like eliminating gas, improving our recycling and waste management, getting more car chargers, pushing for better public transport, so fewer people drive to the venue and so on. In fact, actually, all the money for the project comes in in arrears, unfortunately. But we think that's manageable. Because we can handle some of it with cash flows, but the thirty eight thousand pounds is critical to take it forward. What I can tell you is how much extra money you'll get. That depends on lots of variables. I think you get about eight thousand pounds a year from your units at the moment. I'm told that could double, but we'll see. I'm just told they're twice as efficient as they were when we put them up in two thousand and twelve. Anyone have any questions?
Any questions or anything? Are there any comments from anyone? Andy?
Yeah, the one thing that I'm not quite clear on was the time scales. So what's the time difference between us laying out the cash and us getting the cash back?
The proposal before you is that the loan is repaid before the end of this current financial year. I understand that it could be sooner than that, but...
Oh yeah, it could be sooner than that. Yes, it depends how quickly Somerset pay us. I'm told under this particular scheme, they're actually quite good. But I've had have experiences in the past where there have been delays, but taking it down to the end of March keeps your books nice and clean, keeps my books nice and clean. And it'll certainly be sorted before then. I mean, that's very cautious, but I do appreciate that, just in case something goes wrong. The building work will be from the twelfth of January. And it should take two weeks. And Somerset have been really helpful, by the way, also. So I want to thank Somerset Council because they'd be really helpful about giving us space for a builder's yard and facilitating access, that kind of thing.
Can I also just thank, I think she's somewhere in South America right now, but Linnea, who was working with us as our renewable energy coordinator, she's left and is travelling at the moment, but she was really key in working with Steve on this bid. And so I just want to sort of thank her wherever she is. Any other questions or comments on this? Is that it? Okay, in that case, let's go to the recommendation. So the recommendations are to confirm landlords' approval for the installation of the new rooftop solar PV panels and battery array at the Cheese and Grain; to delegate authority to the acting town clerk in consultation with the responsible finance officer; to a) obtain all necessary approvals and b) to complete due diligence leading to the provision of a bridging loan of thirty eight K once those approvals are in place and subject to the loan being repaid within the current financial year. So can I get a proposer? Nick, a seconder, Andy Rintmore, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda is item seven, which I'm declaring an interest for, so I will leave the room and hand over to Anita.
Give some context. So you've just heard how ambitious this town council is, how innovative, how we've been doing things differently, how we challenge the status quo, just as a point of reference to another town council not that far from here, similar number of residents, has four members of staff and a budget of half a million. What can you do with that? You can probably empty a few bins and keep the allotments clean, which is actually the legal responsibility of a town council. So we know we're ambitious, we know we're innovative and we, if, has been consistently voted in. So it's clear feedback from the town that they also like this approach. So that's the context, we are doing things differently. So one of the things that we're also doing differently is recognising that being a town councillor with this council is a big job. So if you're going to commit that amount of time, there are town councils that do give allowances, but not very many, whereas at district and unitary level, that is a given. So our unitary councillors, they have a given allowance. So there is a precedent, recognising that when you're a councillor, it is a time commitment. It's not a salary, it's not a job, it's not a wage, but it's a recognition that you are spending time doing work for the town. And yes, we have signed up to that as councillors. So who then can do a role at a town council level if there is no allowance and it is an ambitious town council that's trying to achieve a lot? The only people that can do that have enough money to do that. So we are talking about, we're talking about money and we're talking about privilege. So we voted in May to increase the allowance for our chair, recognising that for that person to do that role, the only way they could do it is if they have an increase in allowance. So for me, that is a value of diversity, inclusion and equity. We're saying that otherwise, only the people that have enough money can do this role, which is generally up and down the country, is events, white retired men. That is the demographic of most town councils. And if you look across the room, our town council has a much more diverse. And this particular chair requested, said if I'm going to do this role, if you want me to do this role, I will need these allowances. So that's what we voted for in May. Since May, we've had Badgers Hill, which Paul, our previous town clerk, which is one of the most complex issues he's ever had to deal with in fourteen years. And our chair, as leader of the council, has to work alongside him with that and now with Peter, continuing issue, as we know. We've had the peer challenge. So who is, the chair has a responsibility also to respond to that. We have had a strategy to write. So we've heard everyone who's involved in that, who led that process? Our chair. And now we have Paul retiring and finding replacement during the transition period. Again, that will require more work from the chair. So the reason that I'm recommending that we increase the allowance is because the workload has increased. Could have we predicted that? I don't believe we could have. So it's recognising now for the next six months, it's a time bound increase, so for the next six months, I'm proposing that we do increase the allowances for our chair. And just so you know, that there is a precedence for giving allowances at town council level. Often they're given to the mayor because that's a recognition that the mayor's role takes a lot of time. So what we've done is actually split, it does take a lot of time. And if our mayor had requested, or previous mayors or future mayors request... If they were to request, the only way I can do this role is if I have an increase, is an increase of responsibility to any of the other councillors, then I would need an increase of allowance. Then I would like to think as a town council that we support that person. So we have split the roles, one has become more ceremonial and one has recalled the chair and the leader of the council. So that is my proposition, my recommendation. Any questions or comments?
It's a comment, not a question. I did a bit of maths. I know it's not a wage, I know it's not a salary, I know it's not replacing Fiona's other work, but if we look at it in terms of number of hours on a minimum wage, it's paying for about half the amount of time, if that, that Fiona actually is spending on the work. She is working incredibly hard and incredibly well, I would say, in her role. And I know it's having an impact on her ability to earn a living. And I know it's having an impact on her ability to earn a living.
And I'm also wondering if any of the previous leaders would like to comment on just how much time this role takes.
You preempted me. Yes, thank you Carla. Yes, okay, would you like to speak now? Okay. As a leader, and with respect to all the other people who've been leader in this room and online, I have to say, I have never known a leader in my time on the council, and that's coming up to the end of two administrations, to work as hard and do so much as Fiona has done and is doing. I think she has a remarkable capacity for understanding everything across the board. She has the enthusiasm to dive into everything, which is almost unheard of to be across it all. And she does it extremely well. She's very thorough, keeps everybody very well informed. And I for one am very supportive. I've often wondered how actually, without this extra increase, how she manages to keep afloat, because she's leaving no time for her own work. And as a consequence, clearly, that must be having an impact on her day-to-day life. So I think this is a heartily recommended recommendation. Would you like to come in at this stage?
Thank you. So I'll try this again. So my name's Laura Green from the Free Times, and I've just got a couple of questions around this. So the first question is that, given that the clerk of the council is an apolitical role and the advice that the clerk gives, be it legal or recommended advice, is seen as non-partisan. What roles and duties is the leader picking up in the absence of a town clerk? And is she going to be advising the council on certain matters in a way a clerk would, given the town council have an acting clerk already in place? Can I ask, can I carry on with the other two?
Shall we do it one by one?
Whatever's easier for you. Whatever, yeah, that's fine.
I'm wondering if Peter, you want to start to answer that question, as the difference between the town clerk and the chair?
The leader and chair, because they're two roles wrapped up in one, in this particular instance, is concerned with the governance of the organisation in terms of ensuring that the various responsibilities that we have through council and the various committees are dealt with. But the clerk is there to advise on the kind of technical aspects, on the legislation, on the regulations that were required to deliver. And also, of course, is the head of paid service for the organisation. And is there to ensure that the smooth running of the organisation, that we're properly managed, we have the resources to be able to deliver our responsibilities. It's nuanced, really. I don't know whether that goes some way towards explaining the difference between the two roles. It's important to note, of course, that the acting town clerk is effectively the town clerk, even though we will be having a recruitment exercise for a permanent town clerk. At the moment, you know, my responsibility is to act as the town clerk. And so those responsibilities that the previous town clerk had will continue. And I will take responsibility for, I hope that that explains
Yep, I can add something.
Something of the difference between the two.
Yeah, so the chair also is speaker. So the chair is an elected representative. And is the interface between all of us 17 and the council. Whereas the town clerk is not an elected representative. So Fiona, myself, everybody here has been elected, whereas the town clerk is a paid member of staff.
Yeah, I think that's why I'm asking what she will be doing. Because I think it says in the agenda pack that she's picking up additional roles during that period, and additional duties. So I was just asking what
If I may, I think that's where there's some confusion. So essentially, Peter is going to be doing the job that Paul was doing. The additional responsibility that's falling down onto Fiona is about organising and managing the recruitment process of the permanent replacement.
Okay, thank you, Beth. My next question is that, given that the allowance equates to a paid living salary for some people, at what point does the leader become a paid staff member of Room Town Council whilst in a role which obviously many other parish and towns are doing voluntarily?
So there's a couple of things. So town and parish councillors across the country, there's a huge variation. So some do have allowances, some don't. And as I mentioned, it's, some people need that allowance, some people don't. So we were elected, at the time actually, there was no allowances for any of the councillors. So at this point in time, there is an allowance offered to all of us councillors, like a same amount for everybody. And then those were the additional responsibilities of which we've, at this point in time, only decided there's one, which is the chair. And they have an increased allowance. Was your question around why is that not a wage or?
Yeah, I guess at what point does it become, she's sort of an employee of the town council, rather than a councillor?
I don't think Fiona will ever be an employee of the town council, per se. I think that responsibility lies with Peter currently and the members of staff. Fiona really has a double role in that she is liaising with Peter and the staff, whilst also communicating with us and behaving in every other respect as a councillor. And I don't think any, either of those jobs should ever be confused. Fiona is and always will be a councillor, not a member of staff, regardless of this allowance.
Okay, thank you.
Steve also wanted
Just on that, just casting my mind back to when we agreed this in May. It was very clear then that the allowance was for the person, not for the role. And Fiona's situation, being self-employed, made it sort of apparent that if we didn't give her that allowance, she couldn't do that role. So we were very clear that this is not a rolling thing, you know, the next person who is leader, whenever that may be, doesn't automatically get these allowances. It was very much for this specific leader and her specific circumstances. No, that helps.
Yeah, and also just, you know, like the other Somerset councillors in the room, there's a model for this, right? Councillors across the country, district, unitary, London Borough, automatically have an allowance. It's, in my personal view, I won't speak for my colleagues, the system needs to catch up. And I feel that we are working with a system that doesn't recognise that actually townish parish councillors have an important role to play.
Great, thank you. I just have one very quick final one. Because it's for a six-month period, the increase, does that mean that when you have a town clerk in place, the allowance will stop before the six months? And because it's four or six months, are you anticipating that you won't recruit somebody within that time?
I mean, first of all, a couple of things. So in May, when, you know, as a group of councillors, we then have the opportunity to vote for who we would like to be the leader of the council. And that is the point where everything is reassessed. Does someone else want to stand forward? Is there a different skill set that's needed? Or is it the same person? If it is the same person, then it's another question of like, what does this person need in order to do this job, this role, not paid job? And that's where we have to reassess at that point. At the moment, all we're committing to is until the next six months. I'm not going to promise what's going to happen by then, because as we know, at the moment, every month, there's a different curve ball. But that's what we're committing to, is basically the next six months.
Andy, you had a question?
Yeah, because actually, thanks for that Laura. It played into one of my concerns about this, which is that because of various specific things that have been happening, the role of the leader and chair has evolved into something over this past 18, certainly the past sort of six or 12 months, far bigger than it used to be. And I think by next May, we need to have taken the time to consider how we redefine that role in order to make it potentially achievable to somebody doing it as a volunteer without an allowance, while still keeping the opportunity for somebody who needs an allowance or wants an allowance to step in. I'm fully supportive of the need for an allowance, but I'm really concerned that we're allowing the scope of this role to creep beyond what's achievable as a volunteer and potentially building this into a permanent structure, which it was never meant to be.
Thank you. Laura, does that answer all your questions?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other comments and questions?
I just wanted to, sorry to you asked about previous leaders, so I thought as last leader, I'd say something before you go to the questions, if that's all right. No, not yet. Not if you buy me a drink. One of the one of the things that struck me when I started becoming leader was I would look at my diary Monday morning and it would be pretty light. I'd have a few meetings booked in, a normal Tuesday meeting that I had, and a few others. Come Monday afternoon, the week was pretty much full. There was very few days where I didn't, where I wasn't in the town hall. And I was very clear when I became leader, I didn't want to spend all my time in the town hall. And I ended up spending most of my time in the town hall. And I didn't put half the amount of work in that Fiona does. You know, I delegated and got rid of as much as I could, as quickly as I could. Instinct, things still came out of the woodwork that you just don't expect, complete and utter curve balls. And I didn't even have things like peer review, obviously Peter leaving and Paul leaving and Peter taking Sorry, Peter. And all the things that then were that. I mean, the Badgers Hill had been running on for two or three years, but it came to that crunch when Fiona became leader. So, you know, just from my own experience, and I know we all are trying to support Fiona incredibly, you know, in what she does. And the amount of effort and attention that she puts into it far, far surpasses what I put into it, quite frankly.
Hello. Yeah, I remember when I was mayor, I just halfway through being, or some time into being the mayor, I'd moved into my own flat. And I'd taken a job at a school and I'd stupidly not realised it was pro rata. So I wasn't getting as much money as I thought I was a month. And suddenly the responsibility of having to go home and be the mayor and only have time for one job and have a second, basically a second job that you're doing for free, has an enormous amount of pressure to it. I remember being in Iceland and wincing to buy a pot noodle once, thinking, oh, please don't decline, please don't decline. So it's one of those, it's one of those things that you have to have the, if you're going to do this much work and have this much responsibility, then you do need, you need to be remunerated for it. There needs to be something for it. I think Fiona works incredibly hard, and I think even if we were giving her three times as much as this, I think it would be worth every penny. I just think it's really, really important. I'll never forget that year of struggle. Because it's a silent stressor, and I think we want to be able to take that off people's shoulders if we can.
When he said Iceland, I thought he was in Iceland and he bought a pot noodle. Yeah. But I mean, I I mean, the fact that we are surrounded, or we are, as Carla very diplomatically pointed out, there's some of us here who are slightly older and don't necessarily need to work all the time. I still work, thank you. So it is really important that we create an environment where people who might not otherwise be able to perform some of the functions of councillors, or do some work as councillors, if we can find a way to allow them to do that, it's really important. And that's why I supported the idea of introducing allowances, whatever it was, 18 months ago, for those councillors who want to claim it and feel they need it. Fiona is extraordinary, exhausting, really hardworking and productive. I'm slightly concerned that this is going to mean that she takes on even more. And I think we have to think about that, there's a kind of risk around that. But yeah, I mean, I can't see how we could not support this for a limited period of time.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, yeah, Somerset councillors have been mentioned a few times. We do have an allowance and some committee chairs and members of the executive and their assistants, they get extra as well, and vice chairs perhaps too. But that's all in advance, that's known. Some people in South Somerset took a cut when the unitary went forward. But so I'm not, I'm not kind of totally object to this myself at all. Some people might say it wasn't advertised a few years ago. But I'm thinking that's because, you know, as in allowances for all town councillors wasn't possible. I'm assuming that was because I think the monitoring office at Somerset County, or something at the time, said, no, you've got to go through some sort of panel to have the approval of, the panel to give town councillors allowances. I think that's, Laura's nodding there. I'm assuming that went through okay, and I'm assuming there's no condition on that that might affect this, there's no external approval that needs to be made that would, this has to go through. That's all really. Thank you. But I mean, basically, it's, if you don't value the town council leadership, don't value town council's time, then you will only get retired and wealthy people doing it, or people who are slightly crazy and just want to give up paid work to do it. Or maybe you have both, I don't know. Thanks.
Adam, I think it was, we have to have regard for the opinion of the panel. Which we have had regard.
I'm just a bit concerned about the article you're going to write. When you asked about why Fiona was having extra funds for six months, and the answer was mainly around the fact that she's going to be helping to recruit a new town clerk. But I think that in that article, and part of the answer is surely, that she's driving the improvement plan forward. And by the end of that six months, you're probably going to have, you know, an outline of a performance management plan and all of those five or six things that you had in the, and that's part of why she's doing it. I just think that needs to go into your article.
Absolutely. Thank you very much Helen for that. Okay, any other questions and comments? I think actually Fiona's becoming a victim of her own success, almost.
I was just going to add to that, yeah. I just throw my voice in, so yeah, I think it totally deserves it. I went to just, I went to one of the LCM meetings when it first started. And honestly, the people, sorry, but they were really old men representing parish councils. And they had no clue about the people living in their parishes. Honestly, the villages, you know, the young people, they didn't think there was any poverty, didn't know about the young people, the struggles. And Fiona knows all that, she knows what the town needs and she works really hard, so just agreeing.
Yeah, I think for me, it's just about, and we know we've got a low engagement in politics generally. I mean, we just look at, you know, turnouts at elections and how people aren't engaged in what happens in the community, but are the first ones to say things on social media or whatever it is. But I think that if we can get more people around the table that represent a wider range of people in our town. of people in our town, then I think it can only be better for the community. And so I think if you want to have more representation, then I think this is the way to go. And I think this has to be possibly a thing that happens forever at some point, because the budgets are bigger, responsibilities are more, you know, are wider, and I think it's really an important thing to consider.
Thank you, Don. Okay, if, oh, so Polly? I think we'll just take one more then, and then we need to make a decision.
I just think, going, looping back around to Laura's questions and things in the first place, I just wanted to underline that it was a series of complex issues that came at once that has prompted the increase request. I love the fact that we're underlining, reiterating all the things that, that, all the reasons as to why we would pay the leader more in this instance, and Fiona deserves every penny, as everyone has said. But in this case, there are a number of complex things that have come all at once, and that do require now her immediate attention to lead us through a tricky patch. So I think it's really important that that's underlined.
Thank you.
Thank you, Polly. Okay, can we now see if we can actually vote on this, please? So it's about increasing the chair's allowance for the remainder of 25, 26, to increase the chair's allowance by £3,750, at a cost of £625 per month for six months. Sorry? Oh, beg your pardon, okay. Do you want me to repeat that? Okay, the recommendation is to increase the chair's allowance by £3,750, at a cost of £625 per month for six months up to April 2026. So can I have a proposal, please? Andy? I will second. There's my thing, my ticket. I'll be on the back of, oh, I can't be on the back of that one, that's deep down. I'll be on the back of this one. Here you are, thank you. Right, so I'll second. All in favour? I think that's unanimous, isn't it?
Fiona's out.
Yep, okay, unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone. Let's call Fiona back in.
Okay. If we do this quickly, we can all be home for Celebrity Traitors at nine o'clock. Celebrity Traitors is a lot better than my usual television viewing. Okay, two more items on the agenda. So the first item is item eight, which is for decision, the appointment of acting deputy town clerk. Do you want to say anything about this, Peter? We need one.
Just very briefly, it is a legal requirement for the council to have a deputy who can act in the event of the absence of the town clerk. And it's the same with the position that we're currently in, where I am acting as the acting town clerk. We also need an acting deputy. And the, this particular role would be for the period up to the appointment of a permanent town clerk. So really, this item is just seeking delegated authority for me to recruit and appoint from the management group, and to delegate authority to agree appropriate remuneration for that period in consultation with the responsible finance officer. I should just point out that there is a job evaluation that would need to take place, a re-evaluation, depending upon who is appointed. So it's not possible for me to give you a specific figure here, but nonetheless, that's all we're seeking.
Right. Do we have any questions or comments, or, and I think, no? Okay, let's go to recommendations. So the recommendation is to delegate authority to the acting town clerk to recruit and appoint an acting deputy town clerk from the management group that will deputise for acting town clerk in his absence to serve the period until the appointment of permanent town clerk. There's no commas in that, commas in that whatsoever. Delegate authority to agree appropriate remuneration for that period in consultation with the responsible finance officer and HR team. So proposal, Anita, seconded by Steve. All those in favour? Brilliant, thank you. And the final item on the agenda is to elect councillor Lindsay Mayhew to committees. She has asked to be elected to the Community in Place Committee, the Operations and Assets Committee, and the Planning Committee. And so the recommendation is to elect her to those. A proposal, Mark Doynton, seconded by Anne Hills. All those in favour?
Yay!
Hey! You're going to love planning. But that is, but, hold on, guys, can I say, we've done the classic of losing it just before the end. We think that's unanimous. Thank you. Brilliant, thank you very much, everyone. Perfect timing. And the next, hold on, the next council meeting is on the 14th of January, so it'll be a New Year 2026. Thank you very much, and see you soon.